You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 3rd, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience here this morning. I'm going to call the Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023, regular meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners to order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Ron Shafer, will you lead us, please?
For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. A roll call, please, Ms. Roboter.
Commissioner Mrazinski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Graham Rosa. All three are present.
Thank you. Next, we're going to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Some additions to the agenda. Number one, consideration of new officers for the commission. Number two, consider replacement of county attorney with the new appointment. Number three, consider changing commission liaison positions.
I'll make a motion to accept.
And consider liaison positions. I have a motion and second to amend the agenda with those three items. Any, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll add those on under V, W, X, Y, and Z. We're taking up the entire alphabet here today. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I called to move them up to A, B, C, and our agenda as posted at 10:13 only went up to T.
Yeah, I second your motion to move these up.
Did she say, did she say A, E, C?
Under new business.
There's a prior motion on the floor.
Did you get a second?
You made the motion. She seconded. I called for the vote. The vote was taken. There was one aye.
Actually, she made the motion and it did not receive a second. So Commissioner Mrazinski is correct.
What was the, what was your motion?
He wants to move it to the end of the agenda. I say to move it up to the beginning of the agenda.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Then I second your motion. I'm sorry I didn't hear you. This PA is not very loud today.
Yeah. So I, I, I think there's, there's two things that need to actually be voted on. The first is to add those things to the agenda. And then the second thing is to move them to the beginning of the agenda. So first, I think there needs to be, there was a motion to add them to the agenda, but there was not a second for that. That needs to happen. And then you can move to add them to the start of the agenda.
Okay, so I like, because that's exactly what I had done at the beginning, but then he said he was, you know, the president decided he was going to put it at the end. So my motion again is to add them to the beginning or my, my motion is to add them to the agenda.
Yeah, I second that.
Yep. Yep. We have a motion and a second to add those three items to the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
So now I'd like to make a motion to have it as A, B, and C. Move it up to the beginning of the meeting.
Second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay. All right, thank you. Next, consider approval of the March 16th, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration claims, please, Ms. Roboter.
As we did not have a meeting a few weeks back, there will be two sets here. We have payroll for the period ending March 31st, 2023 in the amount of $1,443,424.95 and operating expense claims for the same period, $4,755,785.41 and then for the period ending April 14th, 2023, we have payroll in the amount of $1,457,806.60 and operating expense claims in the amount of $1,889,011.74.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, public comment. Senator Bahatchek.
Thanks. Sorry for dropping up so rapidly. I didn't want to be last in line here. Just want to give you a quick budget update. We just wrapped up the session last Friday at 3 o'clock in the morning. Don't know why we just can't recess at 9 o'clock at night on Thursday and come back on Friday, but guess that's looks a little bit more exciting. So the budget topped out at 44.5 billion over the biennium. Some of the biggest highlights was a record 2.9 billion in new money for K-12. So K-12, as you guys know, is our largest expense in the state. We also did a couple of things with K-12. Finally, no more book fees in the state of Indiana. That's gone. So I have been fighting the book fee war since I got there and we even got it so granular that I said, kids that are on multiple IEPs that are profoundly handicapped shouldn't pay book fees and we still couldn't ever get that passed. So this way wholesale, no more, all gone, it's done. The income differences on school of choice vouchers, whether you like the voucher or don't like the voucher, it's up to you, but there's no more income restrictions. So if your kid goes to private school and you're a citizen and you, you can get, you can apply for a state voucher. So that's going to help some of our families that are a little bit on the edge. So something, well, also our Medicaid, we fully funded the Medicaid estimate, which is right, right about 7.5 billion this year. Medicaid expense continues to grow. House Bill 1004 was going to take a peak at, at more than a peak. It was going to actually cap out what we could charge or what a hospital could charge, commercial insurers for hospital services. It seemed pretty heavy handed to me, but it was capped out at 260% of federal Medicare, which knowing about Medicare, it's, it's not paid out to every hospital evenly. So an Indianapolis teaching hospital is going to get a significantly higher payment than like the Franciscans would. And it only applied to just the non-for-profits. So I'm sure your counselor could say they could probably have some issues if we're going to just treat five non-for-profits. So we did a lot of work on the bill. We straightened it out. What the bill does now is it's more of a, it's more of an analysis of what the spend is going and comparing our bill rates out of the hospitals to 285 of federal Medicare, just to see kind of where we're at with a fingerprint. But the biggest piece was, and this was a piece that I've been working on for a while, we were able to get into the bill. And this is an actual, a study of where the state of Indiana is at with our Medicaid reimbursements. Medicaid is about half the healthcare spend in the state of Indiana. And it's not real hard to see that we haven't really raised those rates in 30 years. The only change we did is we lowered them by 2% a couple of years ago. So it's really hard for the hospitals to survive when half their patients are on Medicaid. And, you know, where are they going to make the money up at? They've got to make it up on the commercial side, which is the other half. Also, the hospitals get taxed. They pay what's called a hospital assessment fee. And that means every hospital pays it and has to help subsidize the hospitals. They'd have a high percentage of Medicaid. So they're getting taxed. I think that, I think their, the payment for that was about, gosh, I think it was almost $400 million of what they spent, what they paid in last year. I think that number is right. But we'll have a better picture of where our state Medicaid is in line with the rest of the states. The way the study is going to do is we're going to take our Medicaid spends for the last, I'm sorry, for the upcoming year. And we're going to compare it with the, with the mean for all the remaining 49 states. So we need to see where we're at and see what we need to do. Because, I mean, our Medicaid uptake is very high in the state. About half our folks are on Medicaid. Our annual average income for a family of four is right at about 200% of poverty. Everybody qualifies. That is a big block of folks that, that we're having to take care of. So something that I'll need to talk to you guys about at some point, House Bill 1499 is a property tax relief bill. It's not going to hit you this year because the only way you pay taxes at arrears. So it will hit you next year. It does a lot. It's about a three-page summary page. So I'll get that forwarded to you and also, yeah, to your assessor as well. But it's, it's, we need to do something with property taxes just because, you know, the increases in property values, we're starting to outstrip folks' ability to pay. We want to make sure that didn't, that didn't happen. So other than that and some other policy things, do you guys have any questions? 44.5 billion and no questions. I love it. All right. Well, if you guys have any other questions, let me know. I'll get you that bill. I'll get you copies of both of those. I'll get a copy of the summary points too, so you see what's going to be looking forward to you next year. Okay. One other quick question too. I know you said it's some changes and we were, I think LaPorte County qualified for a $7 million first or next level connections grant.
Absolutely.
And I know that that money was split out between three vendors. It was kind of structured as like a triple P, like a private-public partnership is kind of how I envisioned it. But I don't know who's managing it in the county right now. So if you guys could let me know who that is, that'd be very, very helpful because that's money that certainly, you know, has my fingerprints on it as well as others. So.
Sure. I'll have them keep you in the loop. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Sure. Um, if this is too detailed, just say so because you said there's a lot in that. But are they granting specific relief to homesteaders?
Yes. That's, that's, there's, there's, it's, there is home set property tax relief in there. There's a lot of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's where it's angled at. We're not going to, we're not there to help the, help the second home. So the non-homesiders isn't, there's no relief.
Okay, I look forward to the details offline. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tim Short, with the exception of four years, United States Marine Corps, lifelong resident, LaPorte County, Will's Township. I'm here not as a member of the Sheriff's Department, but as the Department of Indiana Marine Corps League Toys for Tots Coordinator. Last fall, I talked to you guys about at the start of our Toys for Tots campaign, you start seeing boxes come out. And I had a box and actually a couple toys, collection boxes at both courthouses, one Sheriff's Department one over at the Hiley Building. Just here in LaPorte County, last year, we collected 12,622 toys and we passed those out to 3,500 kids just here in LaPorte County. For Indiana, there was nine of us Toys for Tots, Marine Corps League detachments that did Toys for Tots. And we collected 97,197 toys. We passed those out to 25,000 kids, just again, here in Indiana. Across the nation, there was about 800 of us, 800 Toys for Tots units. And we collected 14.4 million toys and we passed those out to 9.8 million kids. Of those nine, nine million kids, about 447,000 were foster kids that we took toys to for Christmas. And doing all of that nationwide, there was 41,000 of us volunteers that did that. So with that, like I did a couple of years in the past, all of the businesses, entities, whoever it is, that participates with Toys for Tots, we always reward a certificate. So if I can.
Commissioners, I got the, here's one from Michigan City Courthouse. I already had it hung up.
Thank you.
I want to bring that in and give you guys a quick report.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Questions about what we do with Toys for Tots?
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, you do fantastic work. Thank you so much.
If I was caught on the Marines, they'd come and need them.
Yep, super fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Morning. How you doing?
Well, thank you. Yourself?
Great. My name is Lee Payne. I live in Fish Lake. And there's a lot of hearsay she said about this bike trail. So I'd like to know from you guys where we stand with it.
So there was a grant process that was involved. I know we've had some clearing done out there. I can forward you some of that additional information if you can provide me with your email address. I can send that on to you.
So is it going, no going?
Let's see if our county planner is here. He has the.
Because.
You know what? We'll, we'll have our county planner address this during Department Head comments. I'll ask him to speak on it.
Right, because there's a lot of he said, she said stuff going on out there. I went around the community down North Longshore Drive and asked everybody that actually lives on North Longshore about this. And there's nobody in favor of it, you know, and the big thing is safety. They're, they're looking to come through the Collet Anton Woods. And that's a place where their family hunts. So what are they going to do in the process here? I mean, are they going to have to wear hunter orange to come through the woods? You know, you're coming from that woods onto a street with automobiles. It's not wide enough for two cars to come down. And then from there, you're going to dump them onto Highway 4 where there's no sidewalks either. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be answered by the town, I guess, to get this thing going or not going. And I'd like to, you know, have an answer about where it's going to be. Because I'd like, I'd like not to see it, but I realize it's, it may be good, but I'd, I'd not, not for it at all.
Thank you. Just some excellent points. I'll ask our planner to address that during Department of Comments. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Rick Kentav through 24 Box Street, LaPorte, Indiana. I'm happy to see that the very last line, Mr. Sabey is going to get the interim title lifted and get a permanent appointment as the EMA Director. I see that it didn't take a year to do that for him. I think it's time that I'm going to call upon the commission again to cancel your contract with Integris for the search for your HR Director, since our current HR Director's had that interim title in front of their name for over a year. And I think it's time for the commission to do the right thing and remove her interim title and appoint her as the HR Director. And do the right thing and give her the same opportunity that you're giving Mr. Sabey. So you've done the right thing with Mr. Sabey and I think it's time to do the right thing with our current HR Director. Remove that interim title and give her the same opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. I'm here to talk about the HR Director as well. I would like to know where we are at with that process. You pay $17,000 to go try to find somebody that was more qualified or better looking, I don't know what it was, to bring in here. I would like to know that we, we should know what's going on with that process. Has anybody put any applications in? And if they have, why is it taking so long to review them and move on from that, from that point? I think the public has a right to know that and they should know that. Secondly, while I was out campaigning, being bothered by individuals and dealing with Mike Schultz and other individuals, I started getting text messages on my phone yesterday talking about Commissioner Connie Graham Rosa was in a car accident and she's, she's crooked. She's, she did this, she did that. And it basically was saying, request, request documents, insurance documents, the settlements from, from Mr. Jones. The, the claim, the claim that was paid out from the auditor and then other information from Mr. Haney. The person, I, I just received in a large text, Missy Hefner is the author of that, of that piece. I'm pretty sure that's a county employee or elected official. I think it's pretty damn sad that we leaking information out like that. It's wrong. If I can just give some advice to the Commissioners, this is slander. I hope that you will instruct an attorney to file something with, in the court and then file for subpoena to Facebook to find out who this person is. I'm pretty sure we're going to find out. It's somebody in this room. I'm pretty sure of that. Next. It's sad to see all the stuff that's going on in here today. And that stuff that's been going on over the week, over the last few months. I, I pled with you guys to please tone it down. Let's work together. And to no prevail, I guess. It's pretty sad. I wish we can do better than what we're doing now. And unfortunately, I guess it's going to came to the point where things are, have to take a drastic change here. Mr. Sabos, I, I'll be honest with you. I, I received numerous phone calls that you're behind a lot of this stuff that's going on. And I, I'm just, I'm just here to tell you. Man to man, if you have a problem with me or you have a problem with anybody or whoever these people keep making these fake pages, just stand up and say what you have a problem with me. I'm here. I'm not going to fight nobody. You have a comment? Don't hide behind fake profiles to tell lies about somebody else. If it's true, I don't know if it's true or not. I'm not accusing you. I'm just saying, I thought we had a better relationship than that. That, you know, you continue to badger me and other people. I, I just, I don't know where we going with this. And on another note, coming from Michigan City, I had displeasure to deal with two drunk mayors. Professional DUI drivers. Dwayne Perry is our latest. The allegations against him, I guess he's still going in court. It was obvious, there's evidence that he was a drunk, he was, he was drinking and driving. So I guess that makes me a professional on this drinking, driving stuff, watching these people in our city make us look like fools. If Ms. Graham Rosa did something, I'm not a great fan of Grandma, Ms. Graham Rosa, but I'm, I'm a fan for due process. If there's a police report out there that says that she was under the influence, she was given a sobriety test and she failed, you need to present that. Those are facts. We need to quit making false allegations and messing up people's integrity. Personal stuff is just personal. Leave that alone. Serve the damn public. That's what we all want. We don't want nothing else. If Ms. Graham Rosa or anybody else in here did something wrong, put the facts on the table. If you're, if you're a city, a county official, elected official, just put the facts out there. And if she did, I'm all with you. Let's, let's find out what we have to do to punish that person because there should be consequences. Taking vehicles out of the state or out of the county, if there's a policy on that, show us. Because when I was last here, Sheila was, well, Sheila would have been the biggest offender of that if that's the case. Because she stayed in Illinois so many times, so much, she ended up buying a house over there. I, I just don't know where we going with this. It hurts to see this fall apart. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm going to want to speak. I don't know if that would be during public comment or during Department Heads. So I would defer to the Chair.
I think Department Head would be fine. Are there any other? Anyone else for public comment? Anyone on Zoom? All right, hearing and seeing none. All right, Department of Comments. Mr. Jones, please.
Sure.
I don't want to presuppose anything. Obviously, public business has to be performed in public. I hear that there's the appointment of a new county attorney or the replacement of me and I, I understand. And I just wanted to take this opportunity before it happens because I, I don't know what opportunity I would have after that if I'm going to be replaced. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank the commission for this opportunity. Helping the people of LaPorte County is a tremendous honor for me. This job, this role has been remarkably challenging. But it is still a, it was still a tremendous honor to, to help the people of LaPorte County and, and help its government. I have to say, I have to name some specific people who I worked with over the last several months, who I found to be profoundly helpful and diligent and kind and, and reasonable. And just so the people of LaPorte understand that they have good people working in government here. Sheriff Heig, Clerk Stevens, Al Stevens, our Highway Superintendent, Jerry Sullivan, our County Engineer Mitch Bishop, Andrew McGuire, Commissioner Haney, and several other people have been tremendously, and Darlene as well, have been tremendous for me to work with. And these are good people who show up to the county every day trying to do good, important work on behalf of the public. And I, I think, you know, no matter what happens today to, to me or to anybody else, I think the public can know that they have good people working here who show up every day and, and try to do the right thing. If there is dysfunction here going forward beyond today, and I'm not here to, to see it, I'm, I'm sorry. My goal in taking this position was to try to do my best while also lowering the temperature. And I will believe I did my best. I certainly didn't lower the temperature. And I think, you know, some things in our life are just simply beyond our control. I got my first job at age nine as a South Bend Tribune paper boy. I've never lost a job in my life since then. So I put myself through college, law school, business school, built my own business. No family money, actually employed one of my parents, was my father's legal guardian until he passed away a few years ago. Nothing was given to me in my life and I know that one hand giveth and one hand taketh away. My reputation, my honor, my integrity, those are the only things at the end of the day that really matter to me. And if I'm ever going to suffer at the hands of other people who can't understand or respect that, then truly that is beyond my control. And I will walk away from today continuing to hope for the best for our commission, all three of our commissioners. And I will continue to, to hope for the best for LaPorte County. And I want everyone in this room who feels it appropriate to do so, please pray for LaPorte County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Really appreciate your service here over the last several months.
I'd like to speak, actually, if I may.
I, I would actually like to go next because obviously the car accident has been a major issue. It was very disturbing because on Monday, I received a phone call from Councilman Keel and giving me definite deadlines of Tuesday at noon to provide medical records for my son, which was a HIPAA violation in my eyes. I did contact an attorney. And I have prepared a statement. One of the things I do want to go back to is when the accident happened and we presented the claim here, we did talk about whether I should bring up the fact that I had had that car accident. And it was advised that I did not do that because there are people that work for the county that have had accidents, whether it's in highway, MS, EMS, in the Sheriff's Department. And we don't name every single person. But with that being said, I did see the fake profile that Justin, Mr. Keel provided for me. And so I would like to respond. Because I always try to be transparent and open with my dealings as a public official, I want to respond to the press release by someone I believe to be a county official. Using the pseudonym of Ms. Mitzi Hefner, who issued a narrative full of misstatements regarding a vehicle accident I was involved in with the county car in the early morning of March 17th. The night of March 16th, after a long day at work with an evening Commissioners meeting, which was the first meeting, we discussed the emails for Sean Fagan. I was quite shaken up already. I decided to stay at a residence closer to my work with my county car. I changed my clothes, got ready for bed, and around 10:30 at night, I received a call that my son had been admitted to the emergency room at Advocate Hospital in Chicago. And no details were given to me about his condition. I didn't think to return to my Lake Hills home in Michigan City like any other mother would have. I went in the first vehicle that was available and immediately headed to Chicago to be with my son. My son not only suffers from traumatic brain injury from when he was young, but also is profoundly deaf. And I have been the one that communicates with him. And I have been the one that communicates with him for the doctors and any other kind of health issues that he has. I didn't think, I didn't hesitate to be at his bedside. After being with my son all night long, the doctors decided to admit him. They sent him to a floor where he would share a room with another male. Now typically, because of his condition, I can stay with him overnight. But because he had to share a room with another male, I was asked to leave. Without any rest, I headed back to Michigan City that early morning. And I was involved in a fender bender with a Chicago wet resident as I was sleep deprived and frankly still shaken by my son's hospitalization. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, the county carrier is handling repairs to the vehicle, and no one has tried covering up anything about this incident. I called the police department. We were instructed to drive to the police station where a report would be written for us. The police asked for three things. A driver's license, which had my name on it, proof of insurance, which lists the insured as Laporte County, and the registration to the vehicle, which is the Board of Commissioners. I have no control over how the police write those reports, and nor can I, I write the report for them. I drove the vehicle after I reported everything, and I called the carrier and asked them, told them what had happened. They asked me if the vehicle was drivable, and they said, bring it back to Laporte. So I drove the vehicle back to Laporte County to the shop, which I was instructed to drop off the vehicle to. For the nameless author of this press release, to infer, I must have been under the influence of alcohol, or involved in crooked things, or supplied fraudulent information, shows just how malice and hurtful this Miss, Missy Mit- Hefner was in circum, in circum- circulating this stuff. I generally use my county car when I am on county business. And I am careful to use my personal vehicle when it is strictly personal business I am on. Unfortunately, that night, I was not thinking what vehicle I was in. I left immediately, headed to I ninety-four to get to the hospital because I feared the worst at the moment, and only thought to be at my son's bedside. Thank you. And just to clear up, because I know that there was some issues about um the whether the car had Illinois plates or Indiana plates, and anyone that would like to see that, you can, we've got this picture up here, and as the person this fake profile said, you can contact Andrew Jones for the copy of the insurance settlement documents. You can request copies of the claim from Tim Stables, and you can get the vehicle title from Mr. Haney, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grammerosa, Mr. Auditor.
I have no prepared remarks, I was hoping none of this would happen today, but I have to defend my, my integrity uh here. Um, I noticed that you were looking at me the whole time. I, I want to very directly and categorically state that I knew nothing about this Missy, Missne, Missne Hefner thing um until I heard about it last night from someone, so I didn't write it. Um, part of the problem we have in Laporte County the last couple of months is that a certain commissioner is paranoid, and that's Commissioner Grammerosa. And there's been accusations against me at your last meeting that involved me orchestrating something, there's this notion that you're spreading around that I'm orchestrating and I'm running Laporte County, that is laughable, that is nonsense. I've been busy in my office, I had a new chief deputy as of two months ago that I've been working with, who's been doing a splendid job. Uh, and then we had in the payroll department turnover, partly because you, Commissioner Grammerosa, lured one of my payroll department employees when I had a disciplinary issue with them. You brought them to another department and had them hired overnight in the equivalent of a Saturday night massacre in my office that jeopardized the payroll of Laporte County, and you were more than willing to do that to punish me and put all of our county employees at risk, which is an outrage and is a betrayal of your responsibility as county commissioner. So the type of intrigue that's been going on in Laporte County is sourced from you because you have been so paranoid as to alienate yourself from myself as the county auditor. We've done nothing but try to help you and support you, you've alienated Commissioner Haney, you've alienated councilman, and it needs to stop, and today, we're gonna see the completion of a Saturday night massacre in Laporte County because of you and because of your paranoia. I would encourage you to look at yourself and what you've been doing, and I am sick and tired of your false accusations and your false beliefs. Uh, I am busy with the office of the auditor of Laporte County, I have seen Commissioner Haney the least in the last three months than I saw him in, from the entirety of last year. Because he is busy with you presumably running Laporte County, and I'm busy doing my thing, so your accusations are false, your paranoia is destructive, and it needs to stop, thank you.
Mr. uh auditor, I have a question for you, when your employee left your employment, was there a complaint against you? Did she write a complaint against you?
I was informed that she did, I never saw a complaint.
Okay.
But there was a disciplinary issue with that.
There was a complaint against you, she was not feeling.
Yeah, we're not, we're not supposed to discuss personnel issues at, at the uh.
But you're the one that brought it up, sir, you did.
I brought up your involvement in my office meddling, meddling inappropriately in my office.
I did, I did not have a position anywhere else, and I did not hire her anywhere else.
You got her a job elsewhere and you betrayed Laporte County.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Ms. Houston.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say that the remodeling of the nine-one-one center is complete, and how much we appreciate all the support that the commissioners have given to us. And we, it, it's beautiful, Mr. Marzinski saw it this morning, and it is state of the art. And I just wanted to say thank you for all your support.
Thank you, and it is beautiful.
Thank you, Ms. Houston, uh any other department heads for comment? Oh, yes, please, Mr. Bishop.
Hey, you would like me to address the, the question, um comment from uh Mr. Payne?
Yes, please.
Uh, so regarding that trail, the trail um is ran by an act ad hoc com- committee, there was a three-member group. Um, they wanted to connect the Mill Creek community with Upper Fish Lake community, that was the idea. Via Long Shore Drive um through unimproved right-of-way of the county. To date, the county did clear the unimproved right-of-way, and the highway department with Al Stevens, they did some things there. However, as you continue north, um past the unimproved right-of-way, there is, there's a wetland there, and it's owned by G Marshall. And G Marshall, they're, we're contacting him to potentially donate the land, that has not happened yet. Um, so as far as uh, we have identified potential grant, um but none that has been done, and it's kind of the limiting factor would be um G Marshall agreeing to donate the land. And now there are some vocal opponents of the trail. And I, there was a petition that I believe sent to myself and the county commissioners, I think it was about fifty individuals on that petition, all live on Long, Long Shore Drive, so I'm, it's kinda in limbo, I guess, is my question is where it's at right now. So, but um I do plan a meeting with G Marshall just to see what his thoughts are, Mr. Marshall. Um, and I do have a easement agreement, because in the past, he proposed to donate that easement. Um, but I don't know where that is now with the demonstrators.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop, I'm gonna propose that we have a workshop and a community meeting with the, with the members and stakeholders out there to get some better input and try and decide uh if there's an appropriate path forward here.
Yeah, cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have any other department heads? Department heads on Zoom? Yeah, Commissioner Marzinski.
Yeah, I, I, I have an email here that I would like to read to clear up some accusations and threats against this board and against a couple of us personally. This was a letter sent to the Board of Commissioners to President Haney. Uh, April sixth, twenty twenty-three. Re Fagan's claims of lost evidence, lack of transition, and res- requests for all prosecutor email records, dear Mr. Haney. I've watched with interest a few of the commissioner meetings, and today even read a news story wherein Fagan claims that evidence, quote, in some of the criminal cases he inherited, end quote, was, quote, lost from hard copy records being destroyed in a flood caused by a frozen water line bursting in late December Laporte County complex, end of quote. You then continually referred to the Attorney General's letter during the meeting, saying that criminal cases in Laporte County are being jeopardized by the failure to turn over all emails to Fagan. As I explain herein, nothing could be further from the truth. Contrary to Fagan's assertion, assertions, no pending criminal cases were affected by the flooding in the county complex. All the pending criminal files were safely stored in a metal storage cabinet, and the floodwaters did not touch them, let alone destroy hard copy records in such files. I should know, I was in those offices after the flooding and personally examined the files to make sure there was no damage of any, to any of the records in the files. Not one single file that was subsequently turned over was affected, and there was no, quote, loss of evidence, end quote, as Fagan claims. If there were such a loss of evidence, Fagan would be able to produce the name of the case and what evidence he claims was lost, there should be a record of it somewhere, and you don't just toss out evidence, even if it gets wet. Also, you and Fagan may not be aware, but the prosecutor's files don't contain the original copies of evidence, the actual evidence is held by the police department until trial. If a hard copy of a record was damaged, the various police departments would have all the original evidence secured in their evidence vaults, along with PDF copies of all their reports. If a court filing was lost, then the clerk's office would have the copies of the documents. He has, has he referred to any of them at all, looking for his, quote, lost evidence? As to your and Fagan's assertion, assertions that, quote, no transition, end quote, by me, or that I was not, quote, cooperative, end quote, during Fagan's transition, that is patently false and demeaning to my staff and Fagan's chief deputy, Charles Waterson. I conducted an effective transition prior to the end of my term as the elected prosecutor to Laporte County with my staff and with the staff that has been retained. Contrary to the false allegations raised by Mr., by Fagan, and apparently repeated to the Attorney General and others, at no time were any criminal prosecutions jeopardized, except perhaps to the extent that Fagan's actions or non-actions may have jeopardized them. If in fact, Fagan did miss some court hearings, as you previously stated in a meeting, then please tell us what hearings were missed, when the hearings were scheduled for, what judge was handling the hearing, what court they were set in, what is the case title, what the case title is, and how we found out about the missed hearings. That would be useful information in determining who may be at fault instead of nebulous claims of, quote, he missed hearings, end quote, and claim it was somehow due to lack of transitioning him uh to practice law as an elected prosecutor. As to the transition, I made every effort to effectively transfer to the new administration all pending criminal cases, as well as post conviction relief matters that I or Mary Lake were personally handling. Unfortunately, Fagan had zero legal experience in the prosecution of criminal cases or post conviction relief matters, parentheses. He didn't even know what the post conviction relief matter was when it was brought up to him, end of parentheses. And trying to explain to him, all I learned, my twenty-eight years of criminal prosecution experience, or thirty-one years of practicing law, was, in my opinion, not practical or useful. To the contrary, I did explain to Fagan that I would instead be transitioning with his chief deputy, Charles Waterson, and that is exactly what I did. I dealt exclusively with Mr. Waterson in discussing with him the handling of pending criminal matters and post conviction relief cases, as well as other matters of importance about the transition and office in general. This proved to be an effective way to transition and exchange vital information about those cases and how the office needed to be run effectively. Unfortunately, one major impediment to the effective transition was the complete lack of organization by Fagan as to whom he was retaining or hiring to be on the staff. The very day after the election, he notified at least five staff members they would be terminated. When I attempted to get information from Mr. Waterson about what deputies would be taking over the murder cases or other major felonies I was personally handling, I got no concrete answer. When I attempted to get information about who was being retained or hired on staff, it was ever-changing and became a proverbial, proverbial transition foobar in military speak. It would also, it also should be noted that after the election, I gave Fagan complete access to meet with my current staff before, during, and after regular office hours, anywhere outside the media office, due to the termination emails of the five members of the staff I did not want to present in the office to upset the work that needed to be completed daily. He was able to contact anyone on the staff, speak with them at any time, or email them at any time, and I did nothing to interfere with those contacts. To my knowledge, he failed to use those meetings or conversations with staff effectively, instead seeking information about who staff voted for, or their spouses voted for, which is totally improper, if not illegal. When I finally learned in December that Sarah Kinesny and Dennis Caviston were being retained, I met with him, with them, and transitioned all my pending criminal cases in Laporte Superior Courts one and two to them. I also transitioned a few special prosecutor cases I've been handling in Porter County to Sarah as Sarah was second-chairing those cases with me. Well, Sarah and Dennis were made aware by me of all the case histories, current attorney communications, pre-trial negotiations, next hearing dates, and status of those cases. They also knew where to find any other necessary information about the status of these cases on Odyssey, parentheses, the chronological case management system used by clerks and administered by the Supreme Court of Indiana for all court filings and records on hearing, end of parentheses, or the prosecutor's case management system, PCMS. The office uses PCMS in the system that prosecutors, prosecutor's office use to file its criminal cases. This system contains the court filings, records, hearing dates, notes, police reports, documents, case histories, criminal histories, et cetera, for every criminal case filed by this office, by the office. All filings were done electronically, and many files were no longer in paper form, but saved only in PDF format. The major felonies that I were, was personally handling in Circuit Court were turned over to Julian Havens and Atlee Price to handle. They also were made aware of all the case histories, current attorney communications, pre-trial negotiations, next hearing dates, and status of those cases. They also knew where to find any other necessary information about the status of these cases on Odyssey or in PCMS. A few low-level felony cases were discussed with John Norris as well, and those files were provided to him personally. Any existing criminal investigations were discussed by my investigator, Tony McClintock, who unfortunately, Fagan fired him on January third. I also spoke to my staff in Michigan City and Laporte about all the pending cases and investigations, and showed them where any hard folders containing these cases were in the offices. These files were fully accessible to Fagan if he chose to review them in bold print. To be crystal clear, all pending criminal cases were transitioned completely to those staff being retained. None of the criminal cases were jeopardized in any way, nor was there any threat to these matters that these matters might be dismissed because of misled, missed deadlines, or due to failure to convey information to the new prosecutor. In addition, none of those files had any evidence lost due to the flooding in the county complex. If any criminal matters were sup- lost due to the flooding in the county complex. If any criminal matters were subsequently jeopardized, it would be due solely to the fault of Fagan by his own actions or nonactions after he took office. As to the handling of post-conviction relief matters, despite several requests, underlined bold print, I never received any information about who would be taking over the post-conviction relief matters that were handled handled by me or Mary Lake. Nevertheless, I spoke directly with my staff, my support staff, about those cases and told Mr. Waterson where those files were located, so that when the new administration decided who would handle them, they would know where to access them. All those files were consolidated and placed in a filing cabinet that staff knew about, awaiting whichever newly assigned prosecutor would start reviewing and handling them. None of those files were affected in any way by the flooding of the county complex, and no documents were destroyed in those files because of the flooding. I told my staff, Mr. Waterson and Mr. Waterson, that some of these PCR cases had pending hearings scheduled, and such information was in the hard files in the Laporte offices, as well as on Odyssey, and would need to be reviewed promptly by the person who took over those cases. Apparently, those files were not accessed, nor followed up on in a timely manner by the new prosecutor, which was due to no fault of mine. Fagan's assertion that evidence would be found in evidence is in emails is not even close to how evidence is handled by a properly-run prosecutor's office. Evidence is not maintained in emails. Copies of evidence for all cases are contained in the hard files, parentheses, again, none of which were damaged by the flood, and the parentheses, or in PDF, audio, or video files that were stored in the O drive of the county servers of the criminal cases. The original evidence is retained by the investigating police agency. All staff knew how to locate those files, as well as where those cases were to be found in my folder or on the O drive. Apparently, the new prosecutor failed to avail himself to those detailed papers or electronic files. Finally, the lack of access to emails would not cause any competent prosecutor, parentheses, or attorney for that matter, end of parentheses, to miss a court hearing or deadline. All those case information is easily accessible via Odyssey, PCMS, or the hard paper files. Any prosecutor can run a daily calendar of pending court hearings and cases and access the files via those programs. Parentheses, apparently even one of the current commissioners can do that very easily, end of parentheses. The evidence of these cases is in the O drive as discussed above. All court filings can be found in PCMS or in Odyssey. As to access for emails, not all emails constitute, quote, "records" that the new prosecutor should have simply should be ample to access. Personal records, HIPAA-related documents, and privileged information may not simply be turned over carte blanche to the next prosecutor. Those emails are not records necessary to run the office. I know that due to pending lawsuits, the Attorney General and county attorney are handling matters, parentheses, which raises issues of conflict of interest that are not being addressed in this letter, but will become very important in any litigation, end of parentheses, for which there are emails, for which there are the emails that are protected by attorney-client privilege and should not be turned over to the new prosecutor. These facts about all the emails contained were not obviously addressed or conveyed in IPAC, the Attorney General, or Luke Britt, when apparently when they apparently declared that access to every email should be granted. In the past, carte blanche access by Laporte County is never allowed by the stored email documents because of these issues. Instead, access to these necessary records are pending. Criminal matters are always allowed via a request by the prosecutor for information about certain cases or issue. When I took office, I accessed prior emails of prior administration via a records request to the county attorney, setting forth the specific case or issue of the emails were then sent to me within a matter of days. A custodial, this custodial practice by Laporte County did not inhibit or jeopardize my handling of any criminal matters when I took over as elected prosecutor. I do want to say that if carte blanche access to emails is granted by commissioners, then it may require me to do whatever is necessary to exercise my right to protect the personnel and privileged, the personal and privileged data that the new prosecutor should not have access to, as to those emails are, quote, "not" quote, "records necessarily for running the prosecutor's office." I would hope that with these facts now brought to light and setting the record straight, you may wish to clarify your statements to the effect that there was, quote, "no transition," end quote, or that flooding caused, quote, "lost evidence," end quote. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, John Lake, Laporte County Prosecutor, 2019, 2022. As far as I'm concerned, end of story. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mrazinski. Mr. Prosecutor.
Our department head comments still open?
Yes, absolutely.
So many words, so little said. We just spent about 45 minutes talking about whether we're going to get rid of a very fine attorney, whether we're going to get rid of you as president and replaced by Mr. Mrazinski or Ms. Graham Rosa. We have issues brought by the auditor. All this talk, all this talk, and yet I'm talking, sir. So you're wasting all this time when we have many things to talk about on the agenda. The only comment, this is my one public comment about the emails. I'm going to say it now. I'm not going to say anything else. This matter is one of pending litigation that will be handled by the Attorney General's Office. His decision as to when this lawsuit is initiated is his. I have no input as to what he will do, how he will frame the pleadings, or what he will say, or the counsel that will do it. The decision is Todd Rakitas, the Attorney General. And so that being said, I can't comment anything further than that. What I will say, speaking personally, is the amount of legal damages that will be felt will be more than the insurance claim, more than we paid for the county home combined. That's all I can say. That's what it will be. I have no future role in this matter. I, in the elected prosecutor, and I run my state-level office. I am beholden to only the voters of this county, of the 32nd Judicial Circuit. I am not beholden to the county commissioners. I run a state-level office, and I answer to the people and to my law enforcement partners and to the citizens who work and live in this county and pay good money to be here. And yet, here we are, wasting all this time on nothing, on a trivial matter of what belongs to my office and to my successors. Not to anybody else, to my office. The office records belong to John Lake, they belong to Espar, they belong to Z. Shalagi, they belong to Rob Beckman, and so on and so forth, and they will belong to my successors in four to eight years, whenever that happens. It's not just for me that I'm doing this. I'm doing it for my office, because what happens today will impact what happens to my successors. That is the reason why I'm fighting for this. That is why the state Attorney General is going to fight for this, and that is why it will cost this county so much money over a simply trivial thing to some, but a very important thing to me and to the Attorney General, because those emails and records belong to me by right, by my office, and that's about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Prosecutor. Any other department head comments? Any department head comments on Zoom? I have a, I have some comments here as well. The letter from Mr. Lake is certainly certainly crafts an interesting narrative. I am inclined to side with the Indiana Prosecuting Council, the Indiana State Archives and Records Division, the Indiana Public Access Counselor, and the Indiana Attorney General and his entire office. I will take those state offices and those elected officials' word and state law and state code over the salty diatribe that's nothing more than sour grapes. The state of Indiana here is correct. This, if if this goes fully to trot to through the legal process, it will cost the citizens of Laporte County hundreds of thousands of dollars over something that is absolutely clear-cut in state statute. Ask yourself, would all these government state offices, would the Attorney General be doing this if this wasn't the law and how things were supposed to be? One of, one other thing I'd like to address here this morning is, there's already been a reference to the message that went out. In that message, both Commissioner Mrazinski and myself's reputations were impugned in regards to that we somehow colluded with Commissioner Graham Rosa to cover this up. At the April 4 meeting, I was not aware when we voted, speak for my colleague here, but I was not aware that we were voting for a settlement for a crash that Commissioner Graham Rosa was involved in. At no point has she ever informed the Board of that prior to here today, just now. She never disclosed that in violation, when what I believe is in violation of Indiana state law. When I did, after after that meeting, surrounding some some rumors that I heard and the fact that Commissioner Graham Rosa hadn't parked in her spot and her vehicle hadn't been seen for weeks, I started doing some investigating based upon some information that I obtained, and I came across the fact that Commissioner Graham Rosa was indeed involved in an accident in the early morning hours of St. Patrick's Day on the north side of Chicago and on the Halsted Street area. I checked, I double-checked, and I triple-checked to make sure the information that I've seen was correct. I did a search on, I did a search for police reports online. I was able to turn up the police report, which lists, which Commissioner Graham Rocha mentioned earlier, lists her as the vehicle owner, and there's some other discrepancies as well with the report there, the VIN number, things like that. There's no plate number on the police report. A lot of curious oddities. As I went through state law and state statute, I realized that in Commissioner Graham Rosa's act, both actions and inactions, it was likely she's committed felonies in regard to that. And I did not hide anything. While I did not publicly disclose it, I did turn that information over to law enforcement. And that's all I'm going to say on that matter right now, because I do believe that the investigation for that is ongoing. So I will categorically deny any any conspiracy to cover up this on my behalf at least. When I did become aware of it, I went through, I checked, I double-checked, and then I, and then I forwarded the appropriate information on to law enforcement based upon what I believe are felonies that have been committed by Commissioner Graham Rosa over these past several months. It is, it is certainly unfortunate that we've come to this position. You know, I I feel for, you know, I can't imagine that if it was my child and I got that call and I was in a county vehicle, I don't know if I would take a detour to go pick up another car, not quite honestly. If I got that kind of call, I don't know how the call went, but I can certainly sympathize with that. The other side of it, though, hiding it, covering it up, violating state law, that is not acceptable. You know, we all make mistakes. But covering it up, doing that, it's just inappropriate. It's not wrong. I feel personally betrayed, both as both as president of the commission and and as a citizen and as a taxpayer of Laporte County. We voted up here to approve a $6,500 settlement for someone that we did not know.
Did you actually look at the P, at the purchase order or the claim? Were you not given the claim prior to that evening?
I, the
You just signed something that you didn't look at?
All the information that was passed on to me from from Gallagher Basset through our our insurance agent had no name of who this was for. Earlier, earlier this year, there were accidents from numerous, from numerous departments, varying from almost every department in this county, involving auto accidents that had come across. And when you, and when you sat here and you abstained that morning, I just naturally assumed, since you have a relative who drives a county car, that maybe that was the reason for your recusal that morning. As it stands, no, none of the information I got had who was driving, what vehicle it was or who was driving.
Do the other ones have the employees' names on them?
The the other ones have vehicle names and other things in it at the time, since it was referred from our insurance carrier, as well as Gary Gallagher Basset, as an appropriate claim, and the information that I had for the reports that had come through previously. I had naturally assumed it was one of those, since it went through the full process. But all the information related to the additional emails, which I had, which I plan on actually trying to request and see just how many of those were clipped out of what was forwarded to me, because there was nothing in there that
So do you think I control Gallagher Basset, and I contacted Gallagher Basset and told them to remove my name from there?
I don't know at what part of the process what happened, but I do know you had a statutory duty and obligation to inform this board before we voted, and you violated that. I believe that's a felony.
I abstained. I was told
Whether you abstain or not, state law is very clear on that matter.
We'll see where it goes.
Sure. It is, it is unfortunate we've come to this position. And it is unfortunate that the agenda has been amended the way it has. I can think nothing more that this is pure retaliation for my reporting this matter and forwarding it on to law enforcement by Commissioner Graham Rosa. I don't know if during your hour and a half closed-door meeting yesterday in the Hyler Building, if Commissioner Graham Rosa and Commissioner Mrazinski concocted this plan yesterday during that or not. It's certainly, it's certainly quite curious that that as 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 there's an ongoing investigation that the two of you would meet for an hour and a half behind closed doors yesterday in the Hyler Building, that is highly, highly irregular, and of course, obviously would be a a significant violation of the open door law. Are there any other department head comments? All right, hearing none. We're going to move on to requests. Are there any requests?
Unrelated to department heads? Sorry, I'm here the first time.
Sure, normally we speak during public comment, but I do see you came in late. Yeah, just one, yeah, if you would just give us just one minute, please.
Thank you so much. I am here to give a helpful suggestion for the Laporte County Animal Shelter, where there are dogs and cats, mostly dogs. They're pretty full. My suggestion that is really smart and it's very cost-effective is on the property, as part of the property, right behind the outside kennels, there is a strip of land that I want to say is approximately 50 feet long by maybe seven feet wide, that it would be very smart and cost-effective to have outdoor fencing or kenneling where the grass is exposed. It wouldn't be a cement kennel, where dogs could have their own turn to be in that outdoor grass kennel, putting in a automatic ball launcher. There's tennis lawn, tennis ball launchers, and then there are specific dog ball launchers. Either one would be acceptable, that each dog could have a chance during the day to do that. It would do double duty for the volunteers who take the dogs out to the nearby park. It would decrease aggression. There's definitely psychological effects happening to the dogs to be in such a confined space for such amount of time. And I'm also comfortable that it could very well increase the amount of adoptions, because the behaviors of the dogs will be more calm from their activity. So just to hit the point again, is part of the land that is with Laporte County Shelter, outdoor kennel with an automatic doll box, dog ball launcher would be really, really worth it for the dogs and possibly turnover. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Could you state your name, please, and your address?
My name is Kirsten Reddy. I live at 4778 Meadow Boulevard, Michigan City, Indiana, 46360. And I did adopt a dog there who gained over 30 pounds in one month. He's a very good dog. His name is no longer Bob. His name is Beanie, like Beanie Baby, and he takes orders from my most aggressive cat. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And please get ahold of the animal shelter in Eric out there.
Yes, I was recommended to come here for that from the management and
I'll get ahold I'll I'll get ahold of Eric then and we'll talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, through department head comments, requests, any old business? Old business before us? Nope, alright, then we're gonna move on to new business, uh, first item of business is consider new officers.
Let me take this time to mo, make a motion that County Graham Rosa be elected president of the commission, but to replace Commissioner Haney.
I'll second.
I I believe there needs to be a motion to vacate the chair and that needs to be seconded before there is a replacement of officers according to Roberts rules. Similar correct, yeah, yeah.
Pardon me?
I, uh, Commissioner Marzinski, I believe you need to make a motion to vacate the chair, that would need to be seconded, voted upon, and then you can elect a new chair because. The officers were elected for a year term, so there's nothing that's stopping you of of electing a new officer. But the proper order of this is to make a motion to vacate the chair that's seconded, voted upon, if it passes, then you can elect a new officer.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? And I would again consider this direct retaliation and retribution for reporting Commissioner Graham Rosa's actions to law enforcement.
Unfortunately, you said yourself, I didn't know you had reported me to the police department, so how is that retaliation? Are you doing this because of retaliation, because you wouldn't get the emails? Is that re- retaliation?
We have a motion, can we vote?
There's been a motion and second.
And a second, alright, any further discussion?
Alright, hearing none, we'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, alright, motion passes two to one. Now you would need to elect a new, uh, a new officer.
I would.
Okay, I would make that motion to that uh, Commissioner Graham Rosa fill the open position of president of the commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Commissioner Graham Rosa for president of Laporte County Board of Commissioners. Any further discussion on the matter? Very good, uh, then we'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the motion carries two to one, go, thank you. They 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 just voted for her to be the president, but now there's a vacancy. I I believe there's now a vacancy in the vice presidential position, so I believe that should be voted upon too.
Would, uh, and president, I would make a motion to fill the vacant position of vice president with Commissioner Marzinski.
I'll second.
Very good, well, that is one heck of a promotion for your second day at work for the year.
Second day at work, second day at work.
It is, it is, here we are, May third, you've shown up to work.
Excuse me, point of order, point of order, we're, we're conducting a vote right now, so.
Proper order is further discussion and then you call for the vote, have some Roberts rules order here if you.
Well, again, you're over here talking about the first day of work, so it's my understanding that HR. Actually has a work log order in her office, which is filed. Um, Ms. Monique, would you please come up to us and explain how that work order works?
Monique Thomas, interim HR director, um, we do have on file work, uh, remote work logs for Mr. Marzinski, for Commissioner Marzinski. And they are submitted to my office every month, every two weeks.
Get more done remotely than he does being here.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, um, for the.
Did we vote on the vice president?
There's, there's been a motion and a second, I'm sure, yeah.
So.
Or president.
Discussion.
No, I'm good.
Can we vote?
You, of course, so this would be all those in favor.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
All those. Okay, moving on to, um, what we would change to be is the attorney. The replacement of the attorney and, um, you know.
Would assume we have to do this the same way, uh, we'd make the motion that uh, our president attorney be terminated effective immediately. And therefore that position would be vacant.
Make a mo.
I I would hate to give advice on something that directly affects me.
Make the motion to.
You just make a motion to replace, there's no, um, there's no uh, longevity term there or anything, simple motion to replace.
I'll second.
I didn't make that motion, I would.
I'll make the motion to replace attorney.
As as president, you should allow Commissioner.
I'll make the motion, you can second it, however, we have to.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion.
No discussion.
Mister Jones, thank you so much for your service, you've done an amazing job these past several months. It's gonna be a, a great loss to the county to lose someone with your uh, legal expertise. Thank you, Commissioner Haney.
And I would like to say, um.
We need to vote on it.
No, because this is. So on April twenty seventh at seven, which was last week, Thursday at seven oh one. And this is what prompted me to do this, and I guess I just had verification when Mr. Fagan was up here. On April twenty seventh at seven, uh, seven oh one PM, I received a email. And the email came from the county attorney, by whose direction, I'm not quite sure, because usually in my. Understanding that the county attorney works at the majority of the commission. I had not instructed the attorney to make arrangements, um, for me to be on a phone conversation with Todd Riquita. And one of my biggest concerns was that I was notified at seven oh one in the evening and I was to. Talk to Todd Riquita the very next day at twelve thirty. I could either have the twelve thirty to twelve forty five spot or the twelve forty five to one o'clock slot. And my concern was that Todd Riquita would, is our adversary, is suing us. And I didn't think it was appropriate that our attorney would. Put us in jeopardy talking to an adversary. It is now confirmed after talking, listening to Sean Fagan speak today. When he said that he is definitely representing him. So why would our attorney put us in jeopardy like that is beyond me.
As he asked to speak to you and I made it available to you, you never responded to that email or. Any others, so I assumed you didn't want the opportunity, Commissioner Marzinski sent a very polite email back saying that he was busy. Um, traveling back to Indiana and dealing with some, some other matters, but you know, I, you have the opportunity to decline, which I, I believe you did. I was just making that available to you, so we didn't come to a commission meeting and say, well, Todd Riquita wanted to speak to me, why didn't you arrange it? He asked to speak to you and I made it available, you didn't take the opportunity and and I respect that.
And you took the direction by, from who?
But I don't know, I I received a call from Attorney General Riquita on Thursday and I, I emailed you and Commissioner Marzinski. Uh, immediately after that phone call, um, I was actually out of the country at the time on another work assignment. I took the call from the Attorney General's office, he's been trying to resolve this matter, obviously, you are right. That he is the adversary, he is representing Mr. Fagan's office. He asked for the opportunity to speak to you and Commissioner Marzinski separately to not avoid a, or to avoid an open door law violation. Uh, because the two, uh, two commissioners can't meet together to discuss official business without it being a properly noticed meeting. And I made that opportunity available, so if, if that's uh, concerning to you, I'm, I'm sorry that it's concerning to you. I respected the fact that you didn't want to speak to him, um, and that's, is what it is, I understand.
And then secondly, on March seventeenth, the day of my accident. I came back to Laporte County and I know that you had a concern because Deborah, I. Rich Marzinski and a couple other people were in the office at the same time because he came back that day. Um, but were you concerned on March seventeenth when you, I, Tim Stables? Um, Mr. Jones and Mr. Rule were all in the same room and we were discuss, we had a, a discussion. Mr. Stables left because then it turned into a discussion over the emails, was there a concern then? That we were in violation of open door?
Uh, Commissioner Graham Rosa, I've, I've tried to go over the law with you as best as I understand it several times. Um, the other day we had a department head, I had, I called a department head roundtable meeting here, we had uh, about two dozen uh, folks in here. And I, you came in and you crashed the meeting, I informed you that it's an open door violation, again, you didn't understand it, I tried to explain it to you and you wouldn't listen. And you said, well, I'm not leaving and you just sat down, so, I mean, I I can't, I can't control, you know, what you do or not, I mean, I. Try and, I'm not a lawyer, but I can try and explain to you just like.
Talking about the sirens and you came into the meeting after I'd been working with a department head for two.
That's incorrect, I was already here.
No, I was here first, sir.
I I I had been here for an hour and a half.
Okay, so moving on, can we have a vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
So now we have a vacant spot for county attorney?
Um, because we have to advertise that, I believe that we can't, we'll need to put that out to advertisement first.
We will advertise that for our next meeting, it'll be advertised on time this time, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that because we do not have, currently have legal representation, we extend uh, to. Mister Jones, since he's here, um, the ability if he would, if he would accept it to stay as our legal representation until we can actually have. Until there's actually a replacement, I don't know that it's a good idea to go without legal representation for the county for a couple of weeks.
I believe that we can make, um, pending decisions, uh, based on attorney approval.
I don't know what that means. Yeah, I I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
Anything that we vote on for the, um, to, do we have to actually name some? You're saying that we have to name someone today even though we didn't advertise that first?
My, my, what I'm saying is that I think it's a horrendously bad idea to not have an attorney represent the county. For what's gonna be at least two weeks, um, assuming you're only gonna advertise for two weeks, I I don't know how, what you're gonna do with that, we haven't even. Decided how we're gonna put that out, uh, for an RFP or RFQ, but uh, the, the idea that we're gonna not have legal representation for the entire county of Laporte.
Stay on and so re- replace?
Um, I haven't been paid since January, so is this gonna be a pro bono rule or?
Oh, an attorney not getting paid, that's really new, ain't it, that's, I mean, uh, Tim?
I'm not a child in a divorce here, so like I.
Bad in that, yeah, you'd be number four attorney that didn't get paid, some of them since last year.
Commissioner Marzinski, I I don't, I I'm not here to dispute that, I, I'm not, I actually made it a mission of mine to get all prior attorneys bills paid by the auditor.
Yeah.
And I, I believe I was successful in that regard.
No, we're still not successful in that, there's still.
Not true, all attorney bills.
I would ask that you would, uh, carry on until, until you're replaced, I would change my motion, that your, your tenure would end. Upon the appointment of a new attorney.
Okay, I.
For motion.
And in order for me to accept that, I would like to know whether my bills are going to be, that have been submitted are going to be signed.
Oh, we, we will definitely pay them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to see them.
Well, they were sent to you like two months ago and you haven't signed them because you were in Florida, so like I.
I signed.
What, excuse me? They were sent to you three times, so, yeah, I I've never been provided with any response in this regard. So I I just, I run a business, so I just need to know whether if I stay on in this position, my bills are going to be paid, that's simply the question that I'm asking.
Look into that this afternoon and if it's something that's, that I'm holding up, I'll see that it gets taken care of, if it's the turn, the auder, you take that one.
I, I totally agree, so the question is whether I will continue until my replacement is appointed, the answer to that is yes, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I may be clear, just to provide information for the commissioners, um, my, my desk is clear of attorney bills right now, I'm waiting for. The mid-April billings of Freeman and Associates from, from, from your office, well.
If you did it, you did it in the last couple of days, you did it because we checked and I still have outstanding bills.
So you have to approve them at a commission meeting, they're in, they're in the hopper to be paid, you have to approve them at a, at a commission meeting, they're probably on today and the checks will go out. But everything is off my desk, I'm just telling you. That's correct, Mister. As a, as a point of order, you guys need to, to make a motion and second me staying on until my appointment, or my, excuse me, my replacement is.
So I'd like to make a motion for you.
I would make the motion that we, the, the attorney Jones, uh, stay on as our attorney until such time as he is replaced. By, uh, whoever we decide on.
And I would make, and and I would second that motion with the amendment that Attorney Jones bills be expedited in payment so that we can bring him current. So he's not five months behind.
Any discussion? All those in the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, number.
Thank you, it's very gracious of you, you're welcome.
Moving on to C, reassignment of lia- liaison positions.
You wanna do these all at once or one at a time?
Do it all at once.
Uh, myself, Commissioner Marzinski will replace Commissioner Haney as liaison to the RDC Museum Board. And the Animal Board, effective immediately.
That's your motion?
That's, that's that motion.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Nay.
A second motion would be that, uh, I will replace Commissioner Graham Rosa on the Fair Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And thirdly, and lastly, um, Commissioner Graham Rosa will replace Commissioner Haney on the FMEC. And also the Health Board.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Moving on. A will become D and it's considered proposed rate increase.
Actually, Commissioner, uh, our President Graham Rosa, um, it would be considered approval of Love's Travel Center PUD is that they would be next.
That's not what we have on our agenda.
That's what we, that's what we waited for.
Add to our agenda?
No, it's not, it's not added, it was advertised last Thursday, that's what we talked about earlier, it's why we delayed the meeting.
It's okay, I would make a motion that we approve that, uh, I've been working on this for a long time, a couple of years, this needs to happen.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, second that.
Do we have any discussion?
No, it's been, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with Love's Travel Center and their, their efforts that they've made this year to make that happen. And right away issues and our issues with, uh, with the underground pipeline, they've been fantastic, they moved through this and I was really pleased to. Work with my colleagues on the RDC with this.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, um, consider. Proposed rate increase with Andrew McGuire. Can we, all three of them together, we'll do the, uh, proposed. Rate increase, the EMS, uh, week proclamation. And permission to approach counsel for budget shortages, if you'd like to just talk about everything at once and then.
Sure. I'll start off with the rate increase, so the last time we had a rate increase was in twenty fifteen. And as you wanna know, since then, there's been, uh, quite, uh, sharp increases in all the products we use every day in EMS from fuel, medical supplies, vehicles. Everything has increased dramatically across the board, so with us being a municipal service, we're not out to make a profit in any way, shape or form. We're simply out there just to cover some of our expenses. Um, recently Medicaid increased their amount of payouts for EMS services and I'm assuming that Medicare will follow suit. Um, so the price increases that I'm proposing are based on the Medicare, Medicaid, uh, rate increases, uh, payout increases. Along with a survey of all the surrounding agencies that we, we got information from, put us right in the middle of everybody, so we're not on that. Put us right in the middle of everybody. So we're not on that high end. Like I said, we're not out to make a profit in any way, shape or form, but at this point, we're pretty much losing money. Um, um, so any questions about the rate increase or anything else I can elaborate on? Um, the, at the end of the day, it ended up being about a twenty percent roughly across board rate increase for our services. And I did provide that breakdown to you and also to the uh attorney uh with, for his approval.
It meant my approval. Thank you. And Ms. McGuire, that was actually a pretty fair rate increase given the surrounding communities and what the other rates are. So it's not, it's not outlined by.
Yeah, that's what I thought. To see how much some of the other agencies are charging for their services, I, I was very surprised and, and, and that's not what I want to accomplish in any way, shape or form, so. Um, so secondly, I'll talk about the EMS week. Uh, EMS week this year is May twenty first through May twenty seventh. So we take this opportunity to highlight how important our employees are to us with a week's worth of organized events and gatherings for our employees. We have quite a bit going on this, this, uh, this year for EMS week. Um, we also have an awards program we do annually. We recognize an EMT and a paramedic from our department, a first responder from an assisting agency and a citizen from the community. So in addition this year, which I'd like to announce this to the public, in addition this year, we're hosting an open house at our new Rowan Prairie EMS base on Wednesday, May twenty fourth from two to five and open to public. So once again, Wednesday, May twenty fourth from two to five at the Rowan Prairie EMS base where we host in an open house. We, we'd love to see uh many people from the community there, uh, many of the county employees come out and take a look. Um, so in recognition of our EMS Week twenty twenty-three, I respectfully ask for the reading and the approval of our uh proclamation.
I'd, I'd be happy to do that, Mr. McGuire.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, this is a proclamation to designate the week of May twenty first to twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and whereas members of La Porte County Emergency Medical Service Team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas Emergency Medical Care dramatically improves the survival rate and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Service Providers have traditionally served the safety net as the safety net of America's healthcare system. And whereas the La Porte County Emergency Medical Services Team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators and others. And whereas the members of the La Porte County Emergency Medical Service Team, whether a career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas La Porte County residents benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our La Porte County Emergency Medical Services Provider by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of La Porte, State of Indiana, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty first to twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week and encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank, thank your team for all you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Um, and then lastly, the, the budget shortages. Um, so for the last two, three years, we've run into about this time of year, we run a little bit short in some of our uh budgets, uh, uh fuel, uh uniforms or oxygen, um, overtime. So I do hope to get this addressed during the budget hearings this year. Uh, once again, um, so I'm just asking permission to approach the county council for some of these budget shortages.
Certainly.
I'd make a motion to approve all three of your requests. Consider your rate increase, consider your E, uh, approve the EMS week proclamation and also give you permission to approach the council for budget shortages.
I'll second that.
All the discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to E, consider trade in of watercraft for new watercraft. Sheriff Heath?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, Ron Higge, Sheriff of La Porte County. Uh, Mr. Jones, thank you for the kind words. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Sheriff. It's an honor to represent you in your office.
Thank you. Um, real quickly, I'd sent you guys a lengthy email uh outlining my request here this morning in the sake of brevity. Uh, what we're looking to do at the sheriff's office is trade in one of our old boats into the, so we can move to purchase a new boat. Uh, the purchase will be done via a trade of this boat and through uh donation money that we received for our Marine Patrol. So there will be no cost to the taxpayers of La Porte County and that. We're looking for support to uh move along with this trade.
Motion to approve your request.
And second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Passes.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Whatever boat you boat.
Consider Tiger and Home Wave Commission, uh.
Commissary.
Commissary and communi- and communication proposal. Marika Bay. Oh, you're not Marika.
I'm not Marika. My name's John Wiltshire. Um, I'm Residence Coordinator at the Work Relief Center. Excuse me. We are requesting to go to county council for uh upgrading our system right now. Everything we have is, is paper. Um, we want to get more streamlined with uh, um, like the jail, with a tiger system, uh laptops, not laptops, but Walmart, um, kiosk, sorry, thank you. Uh, and um, this will help us uh streamline what we're trying to do over there with uh rebranding and everything else. Uh, holds us more accountable, holds the, the participants more accountable. And it, it, it makes everybody's job a little bit easier than it has been in the last few months that I've been there, but that's one of the, one of the things we're looking forward to. Um, changing atmosphere and that's, this, this would be one of the things that we can do.
Pleasure of the board.
I would move to uh to permission or approach the council for funding.
Yes.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Consider Lexi Pool proposal.
That is also something in our rebranding, um, of the Work Relief Center. Um, we haven't had a new policy or procedure manual or SOG since two thousand and six, I was informed. Uh, we've been working on it, trying to, to upgrade it. There's been things added, taken out and everything else. Uh, the Sheriff's Department, um, if I'm not mistaken, also used this, the service to help them rewrite their jail and uh their, their roadside SOGs and help them format, um, um, I lost, I'm sorry. Um, help them format what they were going to do to um, upgrade their, all their language in their SOGs. Uh, this program also, we're looking, we're looking to uh get them to write a proposal. Right now, we have not done that. We are coming to you guys to um, get that permission to do that and move forward with this operation of getting our new SOGs written.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion for this.
Most second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, pass. And then um, H, consider request permission to approach county council to spend Miss the.
Mr. Minus?
Min- Mr. Minus. Fun for wash, uh, for new washers and dryers.
That has already been taken care of by the county council.
Okay.
Um, we've already got permission to, to order the new washers and dryers. I think the ones we had are uh, are ten or eleven years old and need to be replaced. So that's already been, and it works.
So just, just for clarity on that, I know they approved funding for it, but the purchase actually hasn't been approved. So I would move to, to uh let, allow you to move forward with the actual purchase, uh, just, just so that there's no, after the fact, there's no uh issues with state board accounts.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hearing no nays, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consider request for out of state travel for Bo- Barb Struckberry to attend National Association of Drug Court Professionals Conference in Houston, Texas from June twenty-third till June twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-seven.
So uh, Ms. Stukesbury is one, uh, one of my part-time deputies. She's been with the office for a long time. And uh, one of her main responsibilities is doing, working, being the prosecutor's representative in the multi- multidisciplinary team with our drug court, I believe our veterans' court and a number, mainly our problem-solving court guru, which the Supreme Court of Indiana is really big into. Uh, she's our person that does that for my office. So, uh, one of the things that um the courts are wanting to do is add another men- uh, an adult mental health court. And because of the overlap between uh drug, some drug issues and behavioral health issues, mental health stuff, um, we're looking and we're talking with the court, uh, the, the judges as to uh the feasibility of that and how that would work. So yearly, uh, Ms. Stukesbury goes down to Texas and for a we, a week-long uh pilgrimage, as it were, to Texas to deal with uh, a national problem-solving court uh seminar, and she's been doing that for a long time. And what, how that's funded is that IPAC, the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, gives us about six thousand dollars every year or so in scholarship money and that would fund, that fund primarily funds this trip. So it's about uh twenty-five to three thousand dollars. Uh, that's about half our allotment. So uh, Ms. Stukesbury, do you have anything you want to say?
I would just like to add that I've been attending this conference. It's extremely beneficial um to attend because it provides me with the tools, technologies and processes to assist our programming. Um, like uh Prosecutor Fagan said, it is completely funded by the IPAC Scholarship, which I've already applied for and was approved for, and it should fully fund my trip. Um, so I would request the permission to travel to Texas. Um, it is in Texas this year, but um, it does go to different locations each year. Um, but it is the National Association um of Drug Court Professionals, so I would ask your permission to travel.
Motion to approve your request.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hearing no nays, pass.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you very much.
Consider La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution, Rob Sabey.
Uh, let's see, what time is it? Uh, still morning. Good morning. Um, I know before you last, uh, the last meeting um, that got canceled, this was on the agenda. Um, this is our mitigation plan that, that needs to be approved. Um, so I, I know the date needs to be changed on it again, but uh, I, it went through this, the county attorney. I, I hope everybody got a chance to see that. Yep.
We did. It's very markedly comprehensive and very well done. So.
I would make a motion to approve that, Rob. Good work.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Outstanding work.
Um, yeah, we, it's been a, a work in progress. It's, that was on the top of our list um since January. Um, once this gets approved, then we go back to all the, the cities and all the municipalities and then they approve it also. And then that, what that does is when, if there's ever a disaster, um, we're all um, can receive FEMA funds if it's declared. You know, we just had the tornadoes went through last month or two months ago now. Um, so if any of that would ever happen here, now we'd be eligible for FEMA funds. Thank you.
There was a motion and a second, so.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hearing no nays, pass. Next, consider request to move Long Beach warning signal and request council for funding.
I would move to approve that request.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hearing no nays, pass. Consider EMA Advisory Board Recommendation of Rob Sabey for EMA Director.
Motion to approve?
And I'll second that and thank you. This comes with unanimous recommendation from our, uh, from our EMA board, advisory board, so it's unanimously approved, so.
And I would just like to say and apologize because I know that that was given to you back in February and that it took all the way till May for them to finally put it on the agenda and get it passed, so.
No, I've actually handed that two days ago by uh, uh, the president of the board, uh, Mr. Mullenhour.
So having a motion and a second, um, to.
Might have been three days ago, sorry. Apologize.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I'd like to just say thank you and, and, you know, our doors always open, our phones are always on. If you ever have questions or anything pops up, or if you need anything, please don't hesitate to, you know, get ahold of us. We're there to help. That's what our job is and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consider agreement between NIPSCO and LPC regarding frost law permits and road repair costs.
That is still being negotiated, so I've been.
Say I haven't seen one.
Yeah, it's still being negotiated. We've made a demand of NIPSCO. They've made an offer. They want a further roundtable between their folks and our folks. Uh, we attempted to schedule that this week. Um, it'll probably take place, my guess would be next week for a commission consideration at your next meeting, so.
Who's, who's she and uh, who's involved in the negotiations?
From uh, the county side or from NIPSCO side?
County side.
Uh, myself, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Bishop. I think of anyone else that's been involved from the county side. Uh, Commissioner Graham Rosa was present on March twenty-second at the initial meeting at the Highway Department. So right now, we have our calculation of what the damage to the county roads is. NIPSCO has their calculation, uh, and we are attempting to reach a resolution as to what those costs are that NIPSCO would be willing to pay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. I'll make a motion to move this to our next regularly scheduled agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Moving on. Consider secondary approval of Wagner Estate, the second plot, Nathan Flick- Flickner?
I don't know if they're on Zoom. There was, um, there were, um, just for clarification purposes here, if I may.
These were approved by the Fat- Plan Commission, correct?
So they were, there was a conti- my recollection is that there was a contingent approval of going through the uh Platt Committee as well before they came to the board. Um, I was uh emailed by uh Attorney Bee Gees office about this. I responded back to him. He indicated uh, we should keep it on the agenda. I kept it on here. Um, I still have not heard back from uh, from any of the other parties in relation to if this a- as of, as of this morning at least, as of if they actually went through the Platt Committee, there's some issues with uh some stormwater uh and, and drainage concerns as well. So I know they, there was talk of them needing to go to the Drainage Board uh after Platt, uh, after the Platt Committee probably. Um, but since, to my knowledge, they still haven't participated in Platt and I haven't seen anything to that effect. Um, I would move to hold this over to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
We would just hold this over until we got all, everything right because the county had been burned too many times or lack of communication between the Platt Board, Drainage Board, the, yeah, let's hold it over.
That would be a second?
That would be my second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and just for clarification, I was at that Platt meeting that they didn't show up to, so they did have an opportunity to go to one.
Moving on, consider support for La Porte County Courthouse Candlelight Tour that takes place in December. Heather Stevens, the clerk.
Maybe it's a good day for a little feel-good something. Um, we have, I received an email from A. Mark Kirth. He's the president of the Preservate, President of Preserve Historic La Porte. And they would like to put the La Porte County, the La Porte Courthouse on the candlelight tour. It takes place in December. It would be Saturday, the, it's the first two Sundays or two weekends of December, sorry. Maybe the first, first. It would be Saturday from three to seven and Sunday from one to five. It would be Saturday from three to seven and Sunday from one to five. Um, I, I have talked, Judge Thorne is in favor and so is Judge Alavie. So he even, Judge Alavie says even offered to guide the tour, which I thought was kind of, kind of cool.
That's awesome, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, pass.
Thank you.
Consider school board ex, ex-officiate appointment of redevelopment commission. Round dispense.
This is an email and recommendation, uh, that was received from the school board, uh, via Mr. Arnold. And, uh, they asked that this be placed on the agenda for consideration.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, if they, the school board turned it in to us, that's usually what we do. So I would make most to approve.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, pass. Considers Board of Commissioners School Appointment, S- School Board Appointment, Bonnie Schneider, Snyder.
I would move to, uh, approve and appoint Bonnie Snyder.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, it pass. Consider permission to approach council to request an additional appropriation from LRS one-one-six-nine for road maintenance, paving, chip, seal, et cetera, not to exceed two point five million, Alan Stevens, Highway Department.
Good morning, Madam President, Commissioners, uh, this is money that's already in our LRS funding. It just wasn't, uh, appropriated, so it, it's on appropriated funds. So in order to spend it on our, uh, paving and chip seal program this year, we've got to go to the council and, uh, with, with you guys' blessing, with you gals and guys' blessing, go to the, uh, council and, uh, and get it appropriated so we can spend it. We've got a pretty aggressive chip seal program this year. We're, uh, looking to do two hundred miles, uh, the, the county did forty last year, thirty the year before. Uh, so we're, we're looking to do two hundred miles, which is, uh, probably the most aggressive we've seen in recent history here at the county. And, uh, it's more than what most other counties in the state are doing, but we, we have to draw a line in the sand somewhere and, and start hitting these roads, uh, to, to get that condition rating up, so.
I would move to approve your request to go to the council for funding.
Um, can we get a, generally when we do paving, the highway superintendent, it's in this list, paving list, where all's going to be paved and what's going to be done, you know, according to the Pacer ratings, whether it's going to be chip sealed, whether it's going to be fully paved. Can we get that, a list of all of the proposed projects?
Correct, we have, uh, we've got a big map on the desk right now and we're, we're trying to cut about eighty miles off the chip seal because we, we looked at the Pacer, we saw what really needed to be chip sealed. We came up with about two hundred eighty, two hundred ninety miles. So we've, we've got to take the best eighty out of those and remove them. Uh, and we're expecting within the next week, week and a half to have the, the paving list and the chip list, uh, ready for distribution to the commission.
I'll second the motion and to approve the, the contingent on that you send us the list of everything, what we're going to do, uh, whether it's going to be chip sealed or, or wherever. Uh, and so that people understand this Pacer rating is a company we pay for that goes and checks, looks at all of our roads and they tell us what needs to be done, whether it be chip sealed, whether it be stripped down to the bare or, or completely rebuilt or whatever. So it's not like it was years ago, the good old boy network where I'll take care of my cousin. Uh, so this, this way it's done modernly, so yeah, uh, if you will send us that list.
Oh, yep.
And then I'll sec- I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Hearing no nays, pass.
Thank you.
Consider property and liability insurance renewals, John Jones from Michiana Insurance.
Commissioners, John Jones, Michiana Insurance. Um, as you know, our renewal's coming up, uh, May twenty-seventh for the majority of our package here for liability and property. However, um, as of last night, I received our traveler's renewal. This morning I received a proposal from Liberty Mutual. Have not had time to digest those yet and read those and make any recommendations, but that'll be forthcoming at your next meeting. What I do have before you today, uh, is I met last Wednesday with the La Porte County RDC, uh, Mr. Haney, Chairman of that, uh, committee. Um, Guy DiMartino is the attorney for that RDC, um, who, uh, reviewed both quotes and, um, specimen policy that I provided on some railroad liability insurance. Uh, Mr. Jones has been involved with that process as well. Um, and I do have, I emailed everything to everyone, but I do have some hard copies. If that will help facilitate today's discussion, um, that I'd like to hand out if that's okay.
Thank you.
So the, the RDC, uh, vetted this, um, railroad liability insurance that would take effect on May twenty-seventh. And I had given them two separate options to consider. Um, and they, and they, uh, forwarded on with their recommendation to the commissioners. The second option, which is a five million, ten million, uh, dollar, five, uh, excuse me, five million per occurrence limit with a ten million dollar aggregate limit and a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, self-insured retention uh, for liability at the rail spur in the KIP, uh, industrial park, whi- which the county is owner of. Um, three, that three point two eight miles of track. This is a broad form, uh, CGL Commercial General Liability Policy that broadens itself to specifically to rail liability in that it, um, would defend the county in any federal employers liability act claims. It also extends and would defend the county for any foreign rolling stock and, uh, bill of laden coverage that would be needed as well as pollution. Um, so that quote from Aspen, um, came in at, I don't know if I added this up again, if I have that in my notes here. It's twenty-five thousand dollars plus one, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for, uh, terrorism coverage and the Indiana surplus lines, uh, fee of six fifty-six twenty-five. And I apologize, I did not add those together. I do have them in an email somewhere. So I'm, I'm looking for approval for that full amount, um, for that, that option that's in your packet that I just handed out.
The full amount, which is? Eighteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents?
No.
No? Twenty-six, eight.
Twenty-six thousand, nine hundred, six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay. I thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
I would approve that.
I had that in the email, I just don't have it in front of me.
Motion to approve that.
Do we have a second?
They both moved at the same time, so.
Can I have a second?
I can't do both.
Can I have a second? I'll be second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Here's my email. You said twenty-six nine oh six twenty-five.
Yep.
That's correct, thank you, Mr. Jones.
No problem. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Consider employee, Employee Wellness Day Screening, Monique Thomas, Human Resource.
Monique Thomas, uh, interim HR Director, just requesting permission for the, um, Employee Wellness Days for May fifteenth through the seventeenth.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Uh, next, next year, I'm hoping that, um, uh, as we're wrapping up the first year of our employee clinic, next year, I'm hoping that, um, either in conjunction with or as a replacement that we use our clinic to do wellness days. That way our employees can not just get, uh, blood screens, but they can get, uh, you know, physical or an annual checkup at the same time. Kind of take a more holistic approach to, uh, helping our employees, um, just do better and be healthier and, uh, and move forward. And if we do it through there, there would be, uh, uh, no, no additional costs to our, uh, employees who are covered by, uh, covered by an insurance plan, so. Um, hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to make that happen for next year. It's my, uh, it's my intention to try and make that happen as we wrap up our first year here. We just closed out and, uh, and see how the numbers shake out. I think we're going to see a significant savings already this year, so thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to.
Yeah, there was a motion in a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Consider renewal of catastrophic stop-loss health policy.
Um, Commissioners, I'll speak to this if I may from my perch here. Um, um, this is, I'm the reporting agent for the county. Essentially, they ask a fair amount of financial information about the county, so, um, and they sent us the renewal contract, which I provided to you and your attorney, uh, um, about, I don't know, seven to ten days ago. Um, this is the same company we've used for, uh, a number of years. It's East, East Isles Reinsurance and, uh, um, that's it.
Pleasure of the.
I reviewed it and it met my approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Hearing no nays, it pass.
Thank you. Thank you, if you get a copy of that contract, me so I can send it, then I appreciate it, signed.
Consider I dot bridge inspection, LPA contract, Jerry Sullivan.
Hello Commissioners, good day. This is Jerry Sullivan. I'm here to, uh, request your consideration. We're signing the, uh, it's a construction con- contractor consulting contract for the bridge inspection and it will be eighty percent grant through NDOT.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion. Do you have any ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, it pass.
Thank you, there will be a, uh, the LPA contract part, which would be the NDOT, uh, notification for the eighty percent match will be sent via, uh, email to you, uh, President Graham Mosa for, for your signature via, uh, DocuSign.
Okay.
So, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for your kind reserve.
Thank you. Thank you, great job, great job.
Consider receive, consider receive, considered submission of RFQ for courthouse engineering submissions.
Did we vote on that, on his?
Oh, doing that, yeah, we passed, yeah.
I made a motion to approve it.
Did we?
There was a motion, a second, did we call for the vote? Can I, I just, so there was, uh, a, a vote, uh, I think it was a month ago or two months ago to send this out for RFQ. We have received submissions and now the commission has the, um, at their pleasure, the decision whether or not to approve one of the submissions.
Well, here we are again. We, uh, was on the committee that oversaw the rebuilding of Michigan City Courthouse. And we said at that time, once we pay that off, then we can afford to move on to the La Porte Courthouse. And then once we pay that off, we can start talking about a new jail. We still owe a lot of money on Michigan City Courthouse, a lot. There are things that can be fixed in this courthouse, however, keeping in mind of the historical value, um, personally, I don't see the need to spend a whole lot of money that we don't have because we were already in debt, big time to the Michigan City Courthouse. So I, I don't, I don't, that's why I never voted for this to begin with. I don't see where it's coming from. I don't think it's necessary right now. I think it's a waste of money and, uh, we do enough of that, so I, I'm not voting for it.
So we, we, uh, we received two submissions for this, uh, from two different companies. Uh, in the interim, um, uh, one of the companies who submitted, uh, informed me, because I wasn't here in two thousand and seventeen, uh, informed me that a actual, uh, multi-hundred-page study was done, um, that included, uh, assessment of the La Porte County Courthouse as well as, uh, some, uh, work done for ADA compliance, uh, needs for the courthouse as well. Um, again, since I wasn't here in two thousand and seventeen, I wasn't aware of that. Um, but thankfully the company afforded me, uh, a copy since, uh, that was passed on to me when I took office, uh, of that. And there's a lot of assessment work that went in there, part of which, um, that I don't think we should duplicate is, uh, is a significant amount of work that went into ADA compliance that we needed to do for the courthouse. So, um, regardless of what happens here with this, um, I don't think any proposal should be passed that would include work for ADA compliance, since that's already been done and none of that would have, I think could even substantially changed, uh, between two thousand and seventeen and now. I don't believe so anyway. Um, the other side of it was, there was a lot of, um, there, there was some assessments that were done and some work that was done in there, uh, or work that should have been done, uh, for example, some grading, um, waterproofing for the basement and things like that. Now here we are roughly six years later and, um, we, we, the water infiltration in the courthouse has gotten significantly worse. I wasn't down there in two thousand and seventeen to see how bad it was, but I know in the two year, two years and change, I've been in office now from, from the past two years to now, we're seeing significantly more water ingress in the basement coming through both exterior walls and coming out through some of the interior walls of the building. Um, in addition to that, we have leaking roof and we have other concerns as far as degradation on some of the sidewalls. Um, some of that grout and things that haven't been maintained are literally crumbling. Um, uh, you know, just to the point where you could go up and just touch it with your hand and some of it'll flake off. So I, I think it's, as far as doing a, a full renovation of the courthouse, uh, it, it, we just don't have the money for that right now. However, if we don't do something to shore up the basement and stop the water, water infiltration, both at ground level, at some of the sidewalls and coming through the roof, we have to, we have to do something about that. The building is literally decaying because of our inaction. We have to do something to at least stop the damage from getting worse. And that's, that's why I've been a proponent of this for so long, is that we have to do something to save the courthouse. Otherwise, there's going to be nothing left to save if the foundation and the rest of the walls just rot away and melt away because of all that water flowing through them.
Do we have a motion?
Not for me.
Gi- given the, given the complexity here, I'm slightly hesitant to move to accept one of these submissions because I think, I think we need to, uh, spend some time. Um, I, I, I would, I, I would move to appoint a committee, uh, including myself and two members, two to three members of the council as well as, uh, county attorney to, uh, try and sort through these two proposals, figure out which one will make the most sense and what things we should parse out of these proposals to lower the overall cost that were already covered, that would not have changed in the past six years. So I think there's some new assessment that needs to be done. We don't need necessarily duplicate some of the work that was done in two thousand and seventeen.
Making a motion to go to committee?
My, my, my motion would be to go to committee, my se- uh, myself and the commission and two to three appointments from the council as well as, uh, the attorneys as necessary.
Do we have a second?
No, not for me.
It dies for a lack of second.
Yeah.
And last but not least, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Thank you.